Welcome to the regular meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. It's June 13, 2019. Councilmember Eddie Smotherman has our prayer and our pledge.
If you would, bow your head. Lord, thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful day that we've had. All the employees that we have here in the city, we're so thankful for. The community, we're proud of, and we thank you for all the blessings that you continuously cast down on Murfreesboro. As we go into this meeting tonight, Lord, I hope you give us knowledge and understanding and comfort to those council members who will vote tonight. And I hope that everyone's comfortable with the decision that we wind up making before the night's over, and I think with your guidance, we will wind up with the right decision. Lord, we're thankful for the teachers that we have in our community, our firefighters, our police officers, and every single one, all the way down to the custodian. We're just thankful for our employees and what a blessing they are to this city. We know that there's people in Murfreesboro who are sick, who are struggling, who are having a hard time, and we just pray that you keep your hands wrapped around them as well. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You have three items on your consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone has any questions on?
No questions. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye. We'll now move into fiscal year 20, 2020 budget matters, the proposed fiscal year 20 budget being proposed by the administration. Mr. Tindall.
Mayor, this is second reading for the appropriations ordinance and the tax rate ordinance in adoption of, we're still adopting changes, right? Aaron, we're still adopting changes.
There's a list of changes in the letter that was sent to council last night.
The changes that were sent to council last night, so it's adopting of those changes that need to be voted on. Of course, we've discussed this over an extensive period of time and had substantial discussion last night, so we're available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right, we'll move into ordinance 19012, or excuse me, 19012, second reading fiscal year 20 for the appropriations ordinance. Do you want to do that backwards again?
I think backwards, and I think we need to do the changes to the FY '20 city budget.
All right, you have the changes that were emailed to you late last night.
These are the changes, Mayor, that would balance the budget at, with an increase of .34 to the existing tax rate.
I have some comments. You want to do the appropriations first, Mayor, or the tax?
No, we need to do the changes first.
Yes, sir.
You have questions on the changes?
No, not just the taxes, sir.
Okay.
Move for approval of the changes.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well, now move into, we're going to flip and do the tax rate ordinance first. Ordinance 1913 on second reading fiscal year 20 tax rate ordinance. We have a motion?
Second.
I have some comments about the taxes.
All right, discussion. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. Yesterday, when the meeting, in the meeting yesterday, I was all over the place, just in my mind, just all over the place. But I've had a chance to dissect some things. I've been in prayer all day, just asked the Lord to guide me, and I come in tonight with perfect peace about the taxes. And it's like, what we're dealing with, it's like making a cake. And when the cake is finished, everybody sees the finished product. But what we deal with as a council, we deal with the flour, the sugar, we know everything that's going to go into the cake to make this cake. And we want it enjoyable for everyone. But sometimes that's not the case. I don't know if we've ever had a council to vote on a budget that it wasn't unanimous. But at this point, what we're dealing with, I will not be comfortable with it, I am not and will not be comfortable with the 39. I've talked to several people today, and I've talked to homeless people, I've talked to senior citizens, and the 39 is too quick, too hard. So, no, please, 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 no. We're not going to have that tonight. No applause, please. So therefore, I want us to discuss, because I don't want to vote against the budget, because it's not just the taxes, the whole budget. And I want us to be unanimous as a council, because we should be, not all the time, but be unanimous, but for the budget, we need to be unanimous. So I'd like for us to discuss bringing it down from the 39.
Yeah, the tax rate ordinance we have in front is 34, right?
It's a 34 cent increase.
Yep, so it went.
And with that 34, I want the people to take advantage of the plans we have, the freeze plan and the other plan we have. If you qualify, please take advantage of it. And in the future, I want to see, I don't know if it's some kind of fund we can have when people do pay their taxes, if people want to pay more, I know somebody that don't want to pay more, I don't want to pay more, but to help people who just cannot afford it. I'd like to see us have some kind of fund for that. It's going to be hard, but we can't do the 39, yeah. I agree, we can't do it.
Yes, we have a motion and a second on 34 cents on the tax ordinance. Any other discussion? Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to ordinance 1912, second reading, which is the appropriations ordinance.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
On the last item.
Uh huh.
Is this the lowest we can go, Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
I mean, is this the lowest we can go and still survive? Absolute lowest. Mr. Tindall?
Well, I guess the question would be, what do you mean by survival? Obviously, at 34, we've made cuts. We've cut out supplemental requests that we've made, that we proposed in our original budget. I think it's a number that is doable and workable for next year. The amount of revenue that comes in dictates what the level of service that we can provide and what kind of services we can provide. So, you know, there's a large, a wide margin in there in what can and what can't be done, but it's all a matter of understanding that what we provide to the community has to be paid for. And so that was the proposal, it was on the table, we've reduced that. We've made the cuts, we proposed the cuts to council, which council just adopted at 34% increase, and that was just voted on, so we're at 34%.
34 cents.
34 cents, I'm sorry, 34 cents. So, and at this point, we're now into the
Appropriations.
Just approving the appropriations, right?
The Lord has given me peace, so I'm okay.
We have a motion and a second.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ms. Tindall, I do have one question now that we're through this. I would like to see us come up with some kind of, some kind of opportunity that if you're 65 years old, or someone had called me today and given me a couple of ideas of 65 years and older, if you've owned your house for 20 years, or coming up with a way that there's a way to be able to put a freeze, not just on income. I don't know how we would work that. I think it's something I'd like to see us study to see if there's a possibility to be able to do that, that, you know, if someone is on a fixed income, they've lived in their house for X number of years, that it would be really easy for them to show us that, and their property tax rate would be freeze, especially for someone that's on a fixed income. At the same time, you know, if there's a way that, we've got areas in town where clearly we've had code violations and things that are on property that's not being up kept, that if there's a way that there's an incentive for people to fix up their property and that come off of their property tax bill, I think that's a benefit for the entire city. But a couple of things, if we could look at that, please.
We can certainly look at those programs and develop some parameters and bring back to council in the coming months.
We've also, in the midst of this process, kind of looked at the information about tax relief and the senior freeze. They are on the county's website, so I'd just like to encourage you to make sure that that is available to our citizens, and when they go to our website, they can find access to those programs and what are the eligibility requirements and all those kind of things, so that the information is easy to get to if they're looking for their city tax.
We can do that. And when, the tax freeze program is handled by Mr. Beatty's office for the whole county.
Right.
And what we can do is, once he's ready to start taking applications, maybe we can work with the local media to put something in the paper to let people know whether it's, all the papers that are offered here locally free and otherwise, to let people know that's available and it's time to start making their application.
Yeah, I think the mayor's idea is great. I honestly love the idea, because nobody's living high on the hog on $42,000 of a combined income, living in a house in Murfreesboro. So, I mean, it, you know, if you're, the income that the person making, if they've lived there 20 years and paid taxes on their property for 20 years, I think that's justification to say that you're a long-term resident and there's an opportunity there for us to freeze their taxes and give them some relief even, you know, and maybe there is a salary cap. I mean, you know, let's face it, if you made a million dollars last year, maybe you should go ahead and pay your taxes at the rate that everybody else is. But $42,000 is just too low a number for most people to qualify for it, even if on fixed incomes, so.
Okay, we now need to move into land use matters. We have the planning commission recommendations to schedule public hearings. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of the city council. We have six public hearings to schedule that the planning commission has recommended approval for all six of these matters to you. We would recommend that you schedule them all in one night. We suggest that July 25th as an appropriate public hearing date for your consideration.
Okay. July 25th, council members.
Move for approval.
July 25th?
Yep.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. We have the purchase of interactive technology equipment for the schools. Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening. These are the interactive boards for Salem. Some of you may have thought of it as white boards at one time with projectors, but they are now called interactive boards.
Any questions?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Any licensing?
Yes, Mayor, we have a few tonight. We have a change of ownership for a restaurant at 3138 C South Church Street, as well as a change of ownership for a restaurant at 1145 Northwest Broad Street. For each of those, they need to finish up their building codes inspections, but otherwise their background check did meet our specifications. We also have a special event permit for several dates for the Tennessee, Middle Tennessee Museum of Natural History for fundraisers. All their applications were in order as well.
Okay, all the applications are in order. Motion second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have a few board and commission appointments, a reappointment of Mr. Kent Siler to the Greenway Projects Committee, and the reappointments of Mr. Eddie Miller and Dr. Linda Gilbert to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Also, the appointment of Dr. Wendy Beckman as the ex-officio for the MTSU, for MTSU to the Airport Commission, replacing Dr. Ron Ferrara, who has retired.
Move for approval. Second.
Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Tindall, I think under other business, you have some economic development planning that we've been discussing.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Colson. He'll come up in a minute. There he is. Jim is an experienced community developer, having served as an economic developer at the community, regional, and state level. He served as New Mexico State Economic Development in building their Economic Development Partnership. He's also been a site locator and economic development consultant, which is a role he fills now, fills now. Jim's a former city manager, Topeka, Kansas, for about five years. Currently, he's a managing partner of AC Economics and working with communities to become competitive in economic development and site locations. Just to brag on him a little bit, he was awarded Economic Developer Year by the State of Arizona as an active member of the International Economic Development Council, International City Managers Association, and frequently speaks on economic development and organizational issues. I can turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, council. Thank you very much. If I can figure out how to drive this thing. So, the objectives today are fairly simply laid out. I'd like to spend a couple of minutes talking, talking about the trends in economic development around the country, touch on very briefly some of the common economic development mistakes that are made, provide some initial observations about the Murfreesboro economy, as I've been able to surmise to this point, talk about the economic development platform, and specifically talk about what would be involved in establishing or optimizing an economic development platform within Murfreesboro. So, the current trend, and I know you've heard this in any conversation you've had with anybody who's operating a business, workforce is a big deal. It is the number one issue that is impacting companies, whether they be manufacturers or office type of companies, anybody is being impacted by the ability to find qualified employees. The contributing factors are many, but they fall into three primary categories. Number one is, there's the baby boomers. Now, we're supposed to be retiring, but we're not leaving. And, but there are a lot of baby boomers who are leaving or are entering into a different aspect of their careers. But with that number of people leaving, it's putting some stress on finding employees to replace them. There's also a technology divide that exists that has never existed before. Technology, if you think about all the technological changes that you have been involved in up to this point, I can only tell you in the next five years, it's probably going to double or triple that. Things are moving at a very rapid pace. And there's a tremendous increase in the non-participation in the workforce, especially amongst men, white men, 20 to 50 years old. That number has increased, that percentage is increasing on an annual basis in a very significant way. And so this is causing the factors in the workforce. Businesses are being forced to play an extremely aggressive role in terms of preparing their workforce. Most of them have given up on hiring qualified employees for advanced technology jobs. They're really just seeking to find people who can get into the companies and are then able to, as they demonstrate capacity within the company, they're investing in training. But this isn't just the training programs that historically has been seen in companies. These companies are often being forced to go all the way back to providing basic math, basic English, basic soft skills to get people to be qualified to work. This is having a huge impact on the site location decision factor. I'm going to talk a little bit more about this, and I want to ultimately turn around how this is an advantage for Murfreesboro. Talked a little bit about technologies changing. I heard yesterday the conversation about traffic, transportation, logistics, and truck driving. One of the industries that's being impacted by technology more than anybody else is the supply chain industry. The changes in technology are causing the supply chain companies to struggle as to how to meet those needs. And we are seeing that in terms of cars and trucks and drivers and technology is changing extremely quickly. That will have an advantage to the communities that can respond to that. Because of technology, consumer demands are able to be responded to in a very effective way. The role of blockchain, artificial intelligence, virtual reality, I'm pretty sure most of you have gotten through the day today without using any of those words. It would be the equivalent of 10 years ago, getting through the day and not mentioning the internet or mentioning Google or mentioning your iPhone. This is, these are, these technologies, and we're not going to get into it right now, those are going to change the way that we do business. And, well, I'll just drop there. Competitiveness is a, is a community matter, and as you as a community continue to look at your future and look at your economic development future, you have control. You have the ability to make the necessary investments, to make the necessary policy decisions, to make sure that you're at the front of the line when it comes to responding to this, to this technology and as it's impacting economic development. I just want to touch on this real quick. I could probably talk about an hour and a half on this topic. We live in a society today that trust in leadership is almost nonexistent. The ability, now, I have to, I've been here for two days, and I've really enjoyed the civility that exists within this body and the, and the way that you guys all interact with each other. On a national basis, trust has almost disappeared. People are not taken at their words, and as a leader, you are not trusted from a starting point. You have to prove that you're trusted, and that's just the reality of economic development today and leadership as it goes today. There is an increased expectation of equality and transparency. Transparency historically is a word that people only use to beat you over the head with it. But you have to understand that you will be, you will be required to be extremely communicative and very transparent in all of your dealings going forward. Some of the common mistakes in economic development is just not being different. I stole somebody else's line. I was trying to figure out who to attribute it to and found out a lot of people had stole it. But swimming in the sea of sameness. One of the things that frustrated me as an economic development site locator is that I'll get packets from communities, and if you took the name of the community off, you couldn't tell them apart. They were all saying exactly the same thing. So I think the two questions that you want to ask yourself as a community in economic development is, what makes me different? And then I think the more important question is, who cares? Why should anybody care about the differences that you have? And I think the challenge that we have as a community is to, A, identify our differentiating factors, and then how do we present that in such a way that it actually means something to somebody? And the second mistake that people make is, they don't engage the people that they want to attract. They may have a new tagline, they may have a new advertising piece, they may have a new brand, but they're not engaging in relevant conversations with relevant people. And that conversation has to be structured in such a way that it's both interesting and beneficial. When you're having a conversation with somebody, you need to be able to understand what is their need and how can I solve that? Our goal is very simply in economic development, become the easy button. The person who's looking for a new business facility is trying to solve a business problem. If you can figure out how to become their easy button, you will be way ahead in this. I think the last mistake, and this is the unforgivable one, is not measuring your own performance. We should celebrate our successes, but we should also be very relevant, or very cognizant of our own failures. And those failures provide us an opportunity to become better. Couple of observations, excuse me, about Murfreesboro economy. The region as a whole, when I talk about the region, I'm talking about the national region. The region is extremely vibrant. You can't miss that. When you take a look at Murfreesboro economic numbers, it supports that you can grow, and I hate graphs like this, especially for you all sitting in the audience, it's probably hard to see. The bottom line is, we're talking about median household income. And the bottom line is the state of Tennessee. The second bottom line, the darker blue, is Murfreesboro. The, right above that is the United States, and then you have in the orange, Rutherford County, and then Smyrna and Laverne on top of that. What this is showing is, over a period of time, the Murfreesboro economy has continued to improve, especially when it comes to household income. But it's still trailing behind the region, it's catching up with the United States. So what message the region from a, from a wage perspective, and there is an opportunity to continue to grow there. So, it's a good story, one of, of success, but also a challenge to continue to grow better jobs in your region. From a, from a, just a numbers perspective, and this is the first thing that we look at from a site location perspective, the population's growing well, you're growing at 3.43%, and by the way, I know everybody's looking at this and saying, well, our numbers are bigger because we've seen recent things. This is the 2017 number, and this was the last national number that I can compare various communities to, so that's what I use. The median age is 30.3, it's younger than the 33-year-old average for the region. The median household income has increased at 8.47%, but you still have room to grow. Poverty rate is higher than the, than the regional average of 11%. The jobs number of 67,000 is a 6% growth, which is double the regional average and the national average. Jobs pop, jobs population ratio, 53%. I think you want to see that number get into a higher. This is pretty much average with the area, but that means for the number of people that you have in the community and the number of jobs in the community, you're, you're, you've got about 53% of those jobs. And then the median property value, 6.7%, but I'm going to jump over that really quick. So, some of the other observations is, MTSU can't, the value of MTSU can't be overstated. But at the same time, I don't think that you have as much engagement with the college as you want to have, and I think that, that it would probably be likewise. I think they would look for opportunities to engage too, so I think there's some real potential to build a stronger relationship with MTSU. The real estate opportunities in this area are absolutely wonderful. You've got sites from a manufacturing and from an office perspective that are very good and would be sites that somebody would want to look at. The utilities, especially, especially electric and water are very good here. I think there's some questions and challenges from a sewer capacity that would impact how you recruit and who you recruit, but that's an opportunity here. In transportation, it's a regional challenge, but there are advantages that while the, the transportation might be somewhat challenging in this part of the region, it's better than other areas. And I think it also allows, because of the location within central, the center part of Tennessee, I think it also offers some logistical benefits, not necessarily from a, a distribution company perspective, but from a manufacturer's perspective. Additionally, I think the opportunity for expansion is very evident. The differentiation potential, you can tell a good story, you can change the focus on the types of jobs that are recruited to this area so that you're attracting higher quality jobs. You have the opportunity to really focus on training and building up the workforce through a relationship with MTSU and the manufacturing community, and I do believe that both from manufacturing and from an office perspective, people would, would have a high level of interest, assuming the next B. We need to structure the alternative value proposition so that when you're talking to these companies, you can demonstrate that the locational advantages that exist here can be measured both in terms of cost benefits and operational benefits. The goal is to structure a communication program which is purely based on solutions, and to use my cute phrase, we become the easy button for these companies. Sorry, my finger's too fat. From an optimizing the plan perspective, I think the first thing that, that we would want to do is to take a very close look at the community's expectations and desires. Make sure that you're defining what you want your future to be, what types of companies you want to track to, or what type of economy you want to have, as a, make that an, an effort on the part of this community to determine what their economic future looks like. Then I think we identify specific targets that meet those industries. We test that by doing some reverse site location. We actually do a live-fire dress rehearsal where we identify a company, a, a pro forma company, and we bring that back to the community and we run it through the site location process, and then we're able to evaluate the competitiveness and the responsiveness of the community, and it allows you to make determination as to how effective and how much capability do you really have when you're comparing it to live projects. I think the most important thing, and I think this is where almost every community gets it wrong, is you have to establish a return on investment and a return on community guideline. You have to understand that incentives are a very, very powerful tool, but it's also easy to invest those where you don't have the type of return that you truly would want. And, I, I do leave some room here that sometimes you're not going to get the financial return that you want, but the return on community benefit is sufficient that, that you still may want to proceed with something. But I think the important thing is upfront, outside of the pressure of a project coming in, establish what those guidelines would be so that you can apply it as you're looking at whether you're interested or not interested in a particular deal. I think the, the key thing then, once you've gone through those initial four planning stages and have a level of confidence in what type of industries that you want and what type of industries fit for your community, you want to structure that recruitment program which, A, is based on those specific targeted industries. You're going to want to define within those industries, what is the, what does the company look like? I may be interested, I'll just use an example, a food and beverage manufacturing company, whether or not it's all the same. Maybe I want somebody that has 150,000 square feet, has at least 400 employees, pays a, a wage level of at least $60,000 a year, and if, if they don't fall within that, there has to be some sort of compelling reason that you would consider still being engaged with that. Once we identify the industry and the types of companies or the, the look of the company that's in there, we build a predictive model that you would then be able to apply to the data of these companies and identify who's doing what that would make you think that they're about to make some sort of decision. And we've gotten pretty good at, at doing that. The next element is to make sure that we're prepared to have an economic impact assessment model in place, that once again, we're looking at a specific return on investment. I think it's important to be able to understand what are the practical and economic and financial impacts of a project, both in terms of what it's going to generate, but also what it's going to cost, so you as a body can have a good public policy decision, discussion as to whether this is beneficial or whether it's not. So, the economic impact model, having a, in advance decide vetting approval process so that you don't find yourself caught up in the emotion and the politics of sometimes happens when a project's coming forward. Build in some flexibility into your standards so that you have a, you have a, a reason and a capacity to sometimes wander outside if it's to the community benefit. You have the rights to do what you want, don't lock yourself in too much. Make sure that you consistently apply your rules. You all, once again, you always have the freedom to do whatever you want, but be consistent because once you start becoming inconsistent, you're going to start losing that trust in the community, and that's absolutely vital. And then have some sort of standard communication presentation format so that somebody can compare this project to others and be able to keep, keep records going forward. I think the, the, the next critical element, and this is really where the rubber starts to meet the road, build an effective engagement model. And, I'm talking to all stakeholders. Some of them are the people sitting next to me and behind me right now. They want to know what you're going to do when you do your economic development planning. Have an open process where people understand what is important and what you're going after. Manage expectations, manage fears, but the same way, make sure that you're engaging those people who you want to engage. Make sure that you're dealing on a regional basis, working with the chamber on this, on the, with the TVA, with the state, with the site location community, make sure that you're, you're out there talking to people about what it is that you want to do. Be very open about what your objectives are. Build productive relationships, and I think this is a weakness of many organizations. I absolutely find it shocking that I have a hard time getting so many local economic developers out of their office. I, as a site locator, I'll be representing a project and I'll call them, and they'll say, oh geez, I got a staff meeting. I can't meet with you, I've got a staff meeting. I'm thinking, in that staff meeting, you're talking about how to attract guys like me to come to your community. So, you got to make sure that, that you build productive relationships. And, add texture to the regional story. What I mean there is, as you become part of the discussion on a regional and statewide basis, don't just sit there and listen. Make sure that you're engaging and making sure people understand what you want, and, and make sure that people understand the benefits that you can bring, and also be open to listen to the benefits that they can bring to you. Build a communication habit, and some people who've known me for a long time realize being an open communicator hasn't always been my strong point. I was a guy who just liked to work on projects, and I really believed in confidentiality. Confidentiality is important to the degree that it's important, but I think sometimes we overplay that card. I think you need to be open, engaged, I think you need to look for ways to communicate with people as often as you can, not only at the beginning of the project, but all the way through. There are times when you can't talk to anybody about a project because it has specific implications within the internal company, and you will lose the project and you will lose their trust, but you have to look for ways to communicate. You have to focus on performance metrics. Measure your performance, measure your successes, measure your failures, but be able to measure what you're doing and then talk about it. If you've been successful, talk about it. If you failed, talk about it, and then talk about how you're going to make it better. Assess and amend is necessary, and you will continue to make your economic development program. The last thing, last part of this presentation, I think a critical element to what we're talking about in Murfreesboro is we want to build local trade craft and capacity. You, you want to set specific organizational goals internally. You want to make sure that you have the resources both from a personnel and from a, a, another, other types of resources perspective, to make sure that you have the ability to compete in the game that you want to compete in. Make sure that you develop all your, your data, make sure you develop your materials. The 13 site location factors, generally speaking, whenever a company is looking to make a location decision, there are 13 types of data. Starts as simple as real estate, labor, taxes, utilities, transportation, and it just works this way down, and, and within each of those 13 factors, there's also some sub-factors that exist there, but make sure you understand them. Make sure that you understand what's going on with, within your community and how it relates to that. The secret is, you're not going to be great at all of them, but you, you will be great at some of them, and then you just need to figure out how to tell your story, and then effectively engage. Don't sit in your office, make sure that you're out there talking to people at the regional level, the state level, and the site location and company level. That concludes my comments, and I'm open for questions if you have any.
How important is, when you do economic development, is the branding of the, the area, you know, some, like a Silicon Valley or whatever, you know, is that, when you approach that concept, you look at an area and try to say, this kind of thing is what we want to focus on, or do you just shotgun it and see who comes?
Absolutely the, the former. I think shotgunning generally doesn't really get you anywhere. Basically, you're at the, the whims of whoever might be looking at you. I think the key is to understand what your differentiating factors are. That becomes your brand. We're the, we're the best at, at this. I think the danger is, is that a lot of people's programs stop at defining what their brand is, or their tagline, or their logo, and they really don't do the hard work of going out there and proving it to people on a regular basis. Almost every company will say, we've got great quality of life, we've got an exceptional workforce, and we've got transportation benefits. Everybody says it. It doesn't mean anything, but if you can say, we've got excellent schools, in fact, our school district rate for the last 10 years has rated at the top 90 percentile in math and science in the STEM classes, that's going to get me to pay some attention to that. Or my community college has an advanced machining robotics program that produces 1,000 people who know how to work on the Fanuc and the Motoman and all some. Now you're adding some details which, if I'm looking to hire robotic technicians, I've now taken a step back and said, you've not only become interesting to me, you've become relevant to me. You're getting close to becoming my easy button.
The, the, you mentioned the baby boomers staying into the workforce, and obviously the 2008 recession had some impact on people's financial situation as far as their savings and stuff for retirement. Also, when they came back, they probably came back and they had lost their defined retirement plan because most companies now do not have those type things that they would have had before that. Is that part of what you think is causing the people who are much further in age? I mean, is, is that what's keeping them in the workforce, or is it just the desire to continue to be young and remain relevant in the workforce? I mean, what do you think?
Yeah, I think it's both. I think, I, but, but, but they're very different people. They're, where you're seeing them in the economy, so you will see some people working in jobs where you will respond and go, ooh, I wonder why that person's still doing that? That's the first one, because they, they didn't save adequately, which is unfortunate. But you also, the baby boomers have been in charge for a really long time, and they're not really in a big hurry to give it up, says, says one who doesn't want to give it up. So, yeah, they're, they're staying engaged, and the fact is, people are healthier. I mean, you, you can be pretty active in your career in your mid-70s where that wasn't common before, but it's, it's both. I mean, they like it. They, they like working. I like working.
And, and I can't let you say white men between 20 and 50 are not entering the workforce without asking a little more explanation on that. What's, what's, what do you think causes that?
Yeah, so it's, it's two things. The number one thing is, so I always refer to these people as the, the too cool for schools. You know, when we were in school, when, when we were studying hard, they were doing other things. Often, a lot of these people, the decisions that they made between 15 and 30 probably weren't the best decisions. There was a, and that's, by the way, that group has always existed. In the past, they were able to generally slide in as a late joiner of the, of the employment force, and many times getting a manufacturing job or getting a job somewhere. What's exasperating that is the technological divide. I don't know if anybody's looked at what it takes to work in an advanced manufacturing job. If, if you don't have a, an understanding of algebra and some communication skill, some writing skills, and, you know, other things that some people miss when they're going to school, it's hard to, it's hard to catch up. And that's why you're seeing a lot of efforts on a national basis amongst the manufacturing community and the business community, working together to try to come up with a program where they can identify work, a workforce that is either coming out of the K-12 with, with different skills, or coming in from the adult population that's unaffiliated with current jobs right now.
Yeah. I've got a son who recently graduated from college, or a year or so back, and, and he's 25 years old, so he falls into your demographic here. And, it's, it's interesting, your explanation, because the challenge that he ran into was, he had gone and he got a mechanical engineering degree, but the workforce would only hire people with five years of experience, and plus, the entire workforce was filled with old people who would not leave openings. There was no opening opportunities being created, and I think that, that, that part of the challenge for this demographic that you're talking about is the fact that there's very few opportunities that they can go to, that they don't say, we don't want five to eight years of experience, and that the opportunities are not as readily available as the public, I think, is being led to believe, at least in, in this area, they're not.
Well, I'm happy to give him 10 names of companies who will hire him tomorrow.
There you go. I'll, I'll may follow up on you, but, but I think he's happy where he's at. But, the, the autonomous car, is, is that market still available? I mean, because our location, we've got automotive manufacturing, we've got mechatronics degrees being offered at several different technical schools and, and junior colleges as well as the university. We've got a major university in our town that would, I'm sure, be more than happy to get involved with that, this type of technology. Is, is, is that still available? And if it is, we've got 18 and a half. And if it is, we've got 18 and a half acres out on Medical Center Parkway. We would love to have some corporation come and look at that would create an environment that we could bring that opportunity to Murfreesboro because I think that's the jobs that we're targeting and I think that the autonomous car is the future. And so I'm just looking, is that the direction and some of the information that you would want other than we've just got good quality of life?
I would never, unless you can define quality of life as a quantifiable economic term, I would never use it. It could be talked about housing values and education values and everything else, but to talk about that we got great hunting and we got great fishing, they have that in Minnesota too. But to answer the question, I think the car companies right now are, that game is very much open. I don't think the industry has decided what it looks like. There's just been a very significant investment by Ford Motor Company into a southern Missouri electric car company. Their partners in the investment is Amazon. I think Ford has made that acquisition and I think they're trying to figure out what or their investment, but I still don't think they know what they're going to do and what they're going to use it for. I obviously don't speak for Ford. But I think a lot of the car companies and the tier one manufacturers today are still trying to figure out what the future looks like from an automobile manufacturer. I think the biggest industry question is, are we going to become the platform that the technology gets added into or are we going to become the technology driver and everybody else can join us? And I think those decisions are being made and I think that's one of the reasons that you've seen a little bit of a slowdown in terms of some of the investments out of automotive company because they've got a lot of legacy investments for chassis and all of the other stuff that they're, but they're focusing more on mobility issues right now. So yes, it's, everything that you're talking about is right on. I mean, we're talking about, when I talk about the future of Murfreesboro, I see this as being an advanced technology area, not only because it's the right way to go. I think in an amount of time, it's going to be one of the only ways to go.
Well, every company is looking at the autonomous car and I'm thinking that, you know, every little small company can't develop their own program. Calsonic manufactures exhaust systems for Toyota, Nissan, General Motors, for everybody. And I think that would be what you would want to target yourself as the driver of the operating system, not the manufacturer of the car. And so, you know, I think that's the direction you would want to go if we were to able to push this down the road. But just an idea, I've got one more question and I'll be quiet. If a city 20, 25 miles away is landing corporate headquarters after corporate headquarters and your community's not and you're the same distance from Nashville almost, would you say that they're marketing themselves better and is their chamber doing a better job? Or what would make that significant difference as to why you're struggling to attract one when you're seeing somebody just down the road attract multiple?
So I'm not in a position standing here to say the why, but the fact that you can't answer that today is a concern of mine. That's what we talk about, that engaged conversation. Every time I lose, or more importantly, every time somebody else wins that I could have been a potential winner, I want to understand. More often than not, within a reasonable amount of time, people will tell you what scored. Now, I will say, a lot of times, especially in the automotive industry, there are certain rules as to where tier one, tier two manufacturers need to locate within proximity to the area. It's different amongst the various companies, but without getting into it, you know, I can't answer the specific question, but it's a question that needs to be understood. You can't pick up and move the city, but you can start targeting to where you can be more competitive.
Okay, I kind of lied a little bit because I got one more question. I met with a local businessman the other day who owns some very large building with a large office space, turnkey operation, it's ready for businesses to move into. However, in the time that he has waited, which has been an extensive amount of time, he's only had four people come. And I asked him a simple question. I said, has anybody who came and looked at your building brought their family or their wife with them? Because I think, and this is just my personal opinion, that the wife has a whole lot of influence over where that husband decides he's going to locate his company. And the reason I say that, if we could bring the husband and the wife to Murfreesboro, I think there's an opportunity. If she's interested in tennis, we can show her a tennis facility that's out of this world. If he plays golf, we can show him the golf facility that's really nice and it's a public course. If his kids are into soccer, we've got a soccer facility that we can really hook him up with. And we've got a great workforce on top of it. I think we've got everything to make his family happy. Do you ever look at making sure that the entire family comes and looks? Because I think there's more influence coming from, and it may, I may have it backwards, it may be the wife coming to look that's the corporate CEO and the husband tagging along. But do you think that there's a relationship to bringing more people than just one person to Murfreesboro when you're trying to recruit?
I think at some point during the site location process, you will, normally there is one person or one or two people who are involved. As it gets more serious, they'll bring additional folks into the search. More often, it's their vice president of logistics or human resources or something else, but I think the key is, is you have to understand what's driving that decision. The really good economic developer is the person who invests the time to understand what's really happening. Why are these people doing what they're doing? What's important to them? How can I present in an honest, factual, verifiable way, the information that's important to them? And ultimately, how is that decision going to get made? If that decision gets made because it has to go up to a board of directors, I make sure that I'm providing all the data necessary for the board of directors to make that decision. If it's a smaller company and he has to satisfy his wife and family, I would strongly encourage them, you know, to bring them into the area. Ultimately, you need to understand the pathway to their decision and figure out how you can provide them the best support possible. I think the mistake that economic developers often make is they treat every project like it's the same. Every project is different and no project is like the one you worked before. There could be some similarities, but you need to engage and you need to be able to build that personal relationship where you can respond to them. And if you're removed from that, you can't be successful.
I'm interested, we talk about this quite a bit because I joke over the last five years that I feel like that we've been to the altar several times and we'll go to these meetings that, you know, it's a confidential meeting and we feel like, okay, we leave and we're like, we got this one, we feel great. We had a manufacturer, automotive manufacturer that we felt like we're going to move their headquarters and we worked with them for about six or eight months and we thought it was a done deal and then all of a sudden they get bought by a investment company and they're not doing anything now. So the question I have for you, what do you see other municipalities offering to be able to get some of these companies in? And what size companies are you seeing that are locating now? I mean, is it larger companies? Is it, you know, 50 employees, 100? But what are other municipalities? Take the quality of life and those things out. What's being offered to move, get some of those companies into the community as far as incentives?
Yeah, so, and I want to say this really clearly and if anybody read the Wall Street Journal, a couple of weeks ago, it really tore the site location industry apart in terms of being 100% aggressively going after incentives. A great incentive deal is not, I was about to dance. Sorry, Lori. We're all dancing back here.
That was lowrider, wasn't it?
There's no amount of incentives that's going to make a bad location good. And unfortunately, I think some communities have done that where they have put together some incentive packages which were just too good to turn down and even worse, they didn't put any sort of clawback provisions in there and the communities really got, sort of sucked dry from an incentive perspective and then the people moved on. I don't think you're seeing that as much anymore, but it's, the key is, if you don't, if you don't deal with the other 12 of those site location factors before you deal with the incentives, it's a bad deal and companies generally won't go for it. But going back to your real question, if I got to the altar, first off, you don't know how far you've gone and generally people aren't going to give you much feedback until after it's over, but you need to figure out, how do I continue to measure myself and how do I get better? I have found that most communities were very respectful of me going back and saying, let me tell you what I can about the project, but some communities used the information in a way that wasn't beneficial to me or my client also.
And knowing the dynamics of our city and your expertise, what companies do you think we should be going after?
So I want to be very careful. It's best not to answer before you've done the work and I haven't done the work, but I can tell you, I think based on everything that's happening within the region, that you have and the benefit of what you have from an asset perspective, both land, education and otherwise, I think that, and where the industry is going in general, I think you need to be looking at higher paying jobs that are focused both in manufacturing and in offices. And I'm not necessarily saying headquarters, but maybe some sort of shared service operations, administrative service centers and other things, but until we really get in and I couldn't answer that.
Well, I'm part of it. I mean, what we've seen, and I think this goes more on the state side as well, that we have to do a better job talking with our state officials. You know, it makes no sense when we know that we've got a regional transportation issue getting back and forth through 65 and 24 into Nashville to continually offer incentives to relocate large jobs to Nashville who the people are living in Murfreesboro and out in the outskirts of Davidson County and then driving into Nashville, which just makes the situation worse. So part of it is being able, we've got to be able to lobby our state officials to be able to bring those jobs for incentives to the outside areas where the people are living right now.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges, Mary, your comment is absolutely understood. The challenge is, it's not those state people, it's not the regional people who are deciding where those companies go. Ultimately, the company gets to do what they want to do and they make those decisions. Now, there are public policy issues which could impact a lot of those things, but really the only thing that's going to impact it is if you can present the competitive advantages of locating here as opposed to there, you can save 35, 40 minutes of a really painful commute if you locate here. If you can demonstrate that the great majority of their labor force is going to come from the Murfreesboro area, why don't you build the plant and why don't you build the facility, sorry, in Murfreesboro so that you can provide a higher quality of life? It'll be easier to recruit people coming here. That's the discussion.
Four years ago, when they opened UBS in downtown Nashville, the president wore a blue tie because 20% of his employee force came from MTSU, majority driving from Murfreesboro. So that's the, you know, what we battle, in my opinion, 24, I-24 is seen more as manufacturing in blue collar where 65, I-65 is seen more office and white collar. And there's 14 million square feet of office space in Brentwood and we have, you know, Brentwood and Franklin area, more than that, more than downtown Nashville. And we don't have anywhere close to that, which in turn means that we don't have the higher housing stock to be able for some of these people to move here. So it's the chicken or the egg, which I think that's really where we need the help to be able to get that. And we've had free land out on Medical Center Parkway to offer, but just having free land is not going to be able to do it.
Yeah, so free land is, I often think a bad idea because it establishes a value that you don't want to establish and ultimately the price, the cost of the development, the land is such a small part of it, there's a whole story that needs to be told and there's nothing easy about it. I think there is a belief structure that economic development is easy and it's really hard. Can't be that hard, I did it.
Many of the people, I tell you all this, that are sitting out here, when we started five years ago, the first question we were all asked was not schools, it was like, hey, when can you get a Whole Foods here or Trader Joe's? So we called Whole Foods, we called Trader Joe's and we couldn't even get a meeting with them until finally we called Sprouts and met with them in Nashville and literally told the guy, we'll beg you to come to Murfreesboro. It took about a year and now as soon as Sprouts opened up, it was the, it was the largest grocery Sprouts that they had ever opened. So part of it is being able to get, just get in the door, which is, in my opinion, the majority of it's relationships and some of those, we don't have those relationships built yet.
Mary, if I can just jump on that real quick. The difference between doing that and doing it a way which they're going to respond is if when you just call and say, hey, I really want you Trader Joe's to come here. If you call up and say, hey, Trader Joe's, I understand that this is how you guys make your decisions, these are the ratios, the population base, the income levels that you're looking at, and by the way, I just wanted to let you know that we meet all of those. And by the way, we're 17 miles from your nearest competitor. Once again, you've become interesting and you've become relevant because I guarantee you that if you're the director of real estate for any company, everybody has a site for you. So I overuse this and I'm going to promise that this will be the last time I use it. If you don't know how to become the easy button, you're not going to be as competitive as you need to be. And the easy button comes with a lot of hard work.
I think we'd love to carry on this conversation, Craig, in the future. I don't know exactly what you need for us to be able to, I mean, moving forward, one of our largest issues we're going to deal with is exactly what we're talking about. You know, battling not as many distribution and warehouse houses and being able to get more of what we're talking about. So maybe come back to us with...
Yeah, I think the plan is to, well, remember this is a workshop item, so it was kind of held over, so there's really no action that we need. It was information that we wanted to share with you as to what we're going to put together as a plan over the next several months, utilizing Jim's help to, I mean, the ultimate goal is to develop internal capacity. I mean, we want to continue to work with those that we've worked with, with the chamber, with the state, you know, with TBA, but we need internal capacity. We're at that size so that we can answer the 13 questions or anything else that some of you. So we'll develop that plan over the next couple of months and I think Jim will be a great asset in assisting us in understanding what our assets are and how to target, what we want to target. And we'll keep you engaged as we go through that process so that you know right where we are and where we're headed.
And I think this is a, we are a great city to draw companies and manufacturers or whatnot, but as an incentive not to waive taxes. When these companies come in here, we need to tax them, have them to pay taxes and not make an incentive like we'll waive your taxes. We need to make them pay taxes.
Hey, Jim, do you incorporate in your studies, do you incorporate planning and zoning? You know, I mean, so you take a look at, you know, here's kind of the finite acreage that we have and if we've got X amount of acres zoned this way, you know, that lends towards being able to attract this or X number zoned that way. I mean, do you factor that in any way to help us make those decisions? I know that's a little bit of a chicken and the egg thing, but it seems like we could be better prepared for this from a planning perspective sometimes.
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember, absolutely. I think the, one of those factors that you're going to be looking at is, does it fit? And so if we're looking at a particular parcel, not only do we want to know about the entitlements that exist in that parcel and any potential hindrances or risks that exist there, but what are the surrounding uses and what is the longer term growth plan? So, you know, I think the way to do this plan is to work with city manager and senior staff or staff as appropriate to come back with a, not the land use plan, because you got some pretty good people who have been working on that, but start taking a look at the primary assets, especially as they pertain to real estate and transportation challenges and say, this is what we think is the best use. So when we come to marketing this, we think these four sites should be primarily used as class A or class B plus office space that's going to be hosting X number of jobs at this sort of economic return. And we think these four sites should definitely be lending themselves to more of an advanced manufacturing type of operation, especially if it's on a highway that's maybe going to place where a niece... if it's on a highway that's maybe going to place where Nissans are built or something like that. So, we want to take a look at the overall thing and understand, here's my canvas. My canvas happens to be your city map. And then we're going to build in that city map, all of the various layers that would go into that from an economic development recruiting perspective. If you don't, the question was asked earlier, if you don't have a specific target, pretty good chance you're going to hit it.
So, a plate like right now, sorry, where we are planning a new interchange in a new road, I mean, it sounds like it would make more sense from the planning standpoint. We've, historically, unless we put an overlay, which we really have not done, a lot of the things have come sort of piecemeal, you know, to us as the property owners have come through. So, as we are looking at a new interchange or, you know, a new gateway area or new office spaces, how can we get in on the front end to be able to make all those decisions before the development starts coming into those areas?
Yeah. I would beat the developer to the punch. I would, once again, you're not going to, maybe, maybe you're not going to find the right developer or the developer who's going to do that, but I would find a representative sample of that person. And I would sit down and say, "By the way, I have this line." I mean, this is part of the prep phase, the pre-easy button phase. I would sit down with, with somebody who's done similar things and say, "This is what I've got. What recommendations could you make to me?" There, if, let's just say if you're talking about ICSC, there was, or retail, there was an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to go to ICSC. And if you, if you made appointments with people in advance, you could, you could pick a lot of brains very quickly, or you could just go to, you know, other cities. And I like to go to other cities, not just my surrounding cities and see what they're doing. When I was a young economic developer and had hair and about 45 less pounds, I did my basic economic development training in North Carolina. And the reason I went there is because North Carolina was doing really well at the time. And I wanted to hear how they were thinking as opposed to how Arizonans were thinking at the time.
Let me, let me ask a question and I'll answer it. And if you've got a better answer, I hope you've got a better answer than what I do. How long, because you've done through this process for other, other communities, right? You've been through this, this, several. How long does this take? We're buying into a relationship basically. And how long does it normally take? And my answer is, it takes as long as it takes. But, but can you give us a better understanding of how long this process of evaluating our position and then coming up with some kind of strategy? How long does that normally take for a community?
Yeah. So, that's, that's the fair question. And your right, your answer was the right one. It takes as long as it takes. But it has to have a specific scope of work. I would say for the things that we talked about today, at least the first part, I mean, you're talking in a three to six month program. And you come out of the gate hard and fast on a lot of the stuff. I mean, you really want to start being, you want to start testing your model as quickly as possible. I'm a, I'm a big believer in what I call year zero. Year zero, just start and, and see where it goes. I had a client not too long ago. They, they're way beyond, behind you. I hope they're not watching this tonight. But they had a real strong interest in a particular industry and we did about two and a half, three weeks worth of, of work. Actually, didn't even have everything in place. And I said, "By the way, there's a show in New Orleans. Maybe we should just go and walk it and talk to people." And we threw together a one-piece marketing, I mean, just a one-page marketing thing, went there, came back with like four companies who are interested in having further conversations. They may go somewhere, they may not. We put a lot of work into prepping as much as you could in a short period of time. But you got to start. You got to start somewhere and you got to fail. I think that's the, that's the hardest thing is, this profession is, is one that a lot of people are going to say no to you. And I, Mary, you were saying something earlier about being the bridesmaid. This is one of those professions where you can do everything right and not win. And you can respond to every question, you can do everything. And then whatever reason, the people choose the other thing. You just got to accept it. And you gotta, you, you have to accept loss.
Is tax increment financing or TIF, is that still a pretty strong tool in the bag? Or is it something that, is something that we've moved on from now? I mean-
It's still, it's, it's, it's still a powerful tool. I mean, it, it has, it has a fantastic opportunity to make difference. And it can't be used for anything vertical, it's only for horizontal. But it has, it has great benefit and can, can be of, you know, it's a little bit, little bit painful to go through the process, but it's worthwhile. I think the other thing, you know, I haven't even looked at this here, but the opportunity zone presents some interesting opportunities, you know, going, going forward.
But doesn't that somewhat push the company to bring the jobs that they promised on the front side in order to achieve the backside result that they're after?
Yeah. I think, so, this whole thing is about understanding each other and what's needed. No, no company's out looking to do something that's not going to fulfill their, their objectives. In fact, I, I will, I've found very few companies who want to overstate what their job potential and their investment potential was. They tend to be more scared about that than you are. But at the same time, you want to come up with some sort of clawback provisions that are both fair and, and can be applied. By the way, as a site locator, I'm not a big fan of clawback. So-
Jim, how, in the process, how do we, how do you typically work with the board, the city manager? Is it typically, do you work straight with the city manager typically? And that's where you do 95% or, and then at the end of the year of working on this, you come and give us a 10-minute kind of summary of what's been happening and what's been going on? Or is the board typically more involved in that? Or, you know, I assume, you mentioned something about kind of getting some direction from, from a council or a board on the front end. But what is that like? I mean, is it-
Yeah. So, typi-
Is it more involved, less involved? What's the-
Typically, my primary relationship would be with the city manager or the economic development director, or whoever the, the operational lead is. But at the same time, I obligate myself to do certain things. Present reports, come in front of you and talk about things. That ultimately is, is up to you and you. But I know, I know who's your boss. So, I think the best way for this to work is, is for there to be a lot of openness about the project, about the process as going forward. I, I always say that I'm going to generate, you know, a weekly report and keep everything up to date. I never do, only because I, it, it, life gets pretty busy. So, I, I think the key would be, within, within the language of the agreement, it states that at these specific milestones, this action will be taken. It could be a list, it could be a report, it could be a presentation.
I guess, you know, just look at what I, for what it's worth, if we go into a relationship, I mean, you know, I think it's just imperative that we always make sure that the board understands what direction you're headed. You know, if, if we get six months down the road and the stuff that you're bringing us back is the same stuff that's been, been brought back to us or not what we're really expecting, that would be a little disappointing, especially if we never had a chance to tell you what we wanted.
Right.
You know? And so, I just want to make sure we have at least a good opportunity for, for the council to sort of say, "Hey, this is what we think is what we're looking for." I think you probably got an idea of that already, but just would like to make sure we, you know, get that.
Well, it's a beautiful place to come and visit and I don't mind being here.
All right.
Especially during the summer.
So, Jim, where are you going to do different than what the chamber's doing? Because basically, what I'm, what I'm seeing from the video that you showed us, that's what the chamber should be doing if they're not doing it. So, what, what would you do different?
Mayor and council member, I, I want to really be careful with that question because I don't really know what the chamber's doing.
I didn't ask you.
Yeah.
I'm not asking you to say what the chamber's doing.
Yeah. I, I-
I'm asking, what would you do different?
Yeah. Well, once again, I'd have to start from knowing what they're doing. But I think that, I think the key is what I've, what I've laid out is how I've always done this. That you, you have to start out knowing yourself. And you have to know what, you have to know what your strengths and what your weaknesses are. And you can either address weaknesses by making certain investments and making certain improvements, or having greater levels of awareness about things. Or some, some you can't. But then, once I determine what it is, then I structure my program. I, I think what, what I do that I like is that I just believe in engagement. And, and I also believe in telling the truth. That, "Hey, I said I was going to go and do this 20 times. I got to tell you, I got to 18. I couldn't do anymore. That's as good as I could." So, in the future, I do need to accept that 18's as best I can do and change expectations, or I need to go and lift a little bit more.
Mr. Timlin, I think it'd be definitely good for us, moving forward, to, to get some more information.
Yeah.
So, Jim, thank you very much for, for coming out tonight.
Mayor, council, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Have a safe trip back. All right. Any other business?
All right.
Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.